Okay.
So like with city councils, you have to do that and you have to take a vote because if you miss three consecutively, you're like booted off.
Yeah.
But county commissions don't do that. So I didn't know if there was a...
When I say that, I'm indicating that I've been made aware of where commissioners are going to, whether they're going to be or not. And they have the reason versus just, I don't know why they're here.
Okay.
Where they are. Okay, and we've got county manager Leonard Hernandez, assistant county manager Robin Campbell, assistant county manager Rob Gelder, budget staff, and we have two and a half hours. The substantive topic is a budget overview and forecast update following up on our meeting for Monday. And public virtual attendance is available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. So I'll just let the county manager take over.
Thank you so much, Chair. Again, I'll start by thanking the budget team, not just here in the room, but also out in all our departments, both elected and appointed as they're working through quite a bit right now with TC Connect and other items. And also special thanks to the auditor's team represented here by Diana and Joe in the room. Your next slide?
It looks exciting.
All right. So again, we'll go over high level overview, 2425 county forecast, and then what's next in the process. Next slide here. Some of these slides we've been over. So we'll go, we'll touch on these and then you can let me know if you have any, any questions as we go through. The property tax assessed values from 2014 to 2024. Next slide shows sales tax revenue. Next slide shows the chart. This just identifies that it's flattening out. Here's what was requested last meeting. This shows year-over-year difference in sales tax revenue based on the percentages that are coming in. So when we go down to 2013, I'm sorry, 2023, and go back a decade, 2023, we have 1.1%, which is about $291,000. 2024 at 1.6%. And that's 419. Now, when we go beyond 25, 24, and even parts of 24 is projection based, but 25, 26, and 27 are all projections. And so you see that it goes from 2.2 to four to five. That's just placeholder numbers that we would have to adjust if things are continuing to be as flat as they are today. Ideally, we'd love them to be, come in at four or five, but when they don't, it really affects our overall revenue. Next slide. Then operating revenues, all funds, dollars in the millions in 2024 at the midterm for the entire budget. 24 proposed at 25, you see it jumps there. Go to the next slide. General fund tax revenues, dollars and millions. And as you see, the revenues there, they actually decrease. So they go up in 24 and then they decrease in 25. It's based on the projections. And then when we go to expenditures, next slide. We have expenditures broken up by all funds and then the general fund. So you can see that spending is going up. A lot of this couple improvement. Then just again to highlight what is going to be in the plans of plan for capital needs. And next slide just gives you an overview of from 23 to 26. Capital expenditure dollars and millions. Next slide here, we have FTEs, full-time equivalent positions added in 2020, 2024. This was a slide that was requested last time to see what has been added as far as the positions. So we've got breakout there that over the last several years, 67.5 positions have been added. That's six, I mean, if we were to say average cost of employee is about $100,000 and it's give and take, some are higher, some are less, that number represents about 6.75 million.
How much?
6.75 million. It's just an average. It's not like an exact number. We could cost that out. But I'm talking with the team and I said, well, what's an average position? About 100,000. Now, some of those positions are revenue generating, so it's not like they're all just a ongoing impact. Some of them have offsets, but that was a high level in the time that the team had to put this together.
Well, two, yeah, I mean, two thirds of those came in two years where we had federal relief and a huge influx of money. It was one-time money, but there were just...
There's work to do.
There was work that needed to be done and there were resources to do it. And some of that money couldn't all be put to one-time expenditure.
Right.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, for the, for the commissioner's office, um, like, does that count the positions for commissioners that were... Okay, so that's, goes into the question of the commissioners and their staff.
Four of them of the ten.
Question.
That would include things like our communications expansion when you ended the TC media contract. Probably most people don't know what the commissioner's line means. There's a lot embedded in there.
So there was, there was a reduction in spending on the TC media contract. They created savings, ongoing savings in excess of the price of the two additional FTEs. So this is where, as Leonard was saying, there's offsets to many of these.
We haven't had time to do the analysis as to, but I do appreciate the team putting this together quickly, just so that you can see an overview.
Yeah, for Superior Court, there was also a new judicial position added to that, and so there were...
Yeah, some of these are mandates, right? Some of these are not just discretionary.
Blake, the Blake positions, which came with revenue, grant-funded positions are on this list. These are all, everything.
Yeah. Next slide represents, so this is the general fund request going into 2025. We'll be talking about this over the next several days and into next week. But this is a roll-up of the requests by department. So we have, starting their 25 budget, and then we go through indirect adjustments, midterm maintenance levels, midterm policy levels. And then what it would take, what it would move the budget to. It's in total an $8.2 million increase. Roughly. We go to the next slide. This is historical expenditures and revenue in general fund overview. So what we have is beginning fund balance, total revenue, total expenditure, year-end fund balance. I would say is from 23 backwards. Those numbers are not in dispute. 24 is, we'll talk about it as one of the last slides in the presentation. Our team is working with the auditor's team on dialing that number in. We'll talk about that a little bit at the end, what the process is. Some of the reason for us still working that through is what we've already explained in other conversations, TC Connect, compressed timeframe. So we appreciate their support and our team's support, and we look forward to getting together with them. Hopefully in the next couple of days, we can sit down and continue that conversation.
What, what's the two-month fund balance mean?
It's the target financially responsible fund balance would be about two months of expenses.
Just like having cash on hand to pay all, pay all our bills.
Okay.
Maybe the average two month. That's that line. If we go to the next. This is as amendment one was approved. That's that, that bar, and then is below that bar and starts to become a concern. Where that little bubble says fund balance below this line results in negative cash flow.
Absolutely. It's a target line.
How, how do you have negative cash flow? Do we have a printing machine in the basement?
No, it just means you don't have enough money to pay your bills. Yeah.
Okay. So it's really not flowing at that point.
Yeah, it's going the other way.
Yeah. There's a cash reserve that you need to cover your funds expenditures, right?
Yes.
There's that's money in the bank and then there's all your funding projections, which are all confusing funny money. And then, but if you're spending too much over here, this is going to get down and, right? And that's, so what happened? Like, it looked like the, all the expenditures are pretty stable. There's not much change over time. And then 2020, it's like things just kind of escalated very quickly. And we go from like, you know...
Some of that's one-time expenses.
COVID.
It's COVID.
Yeah, it's a spending down some of, like Commissioner Menzger said, we got infused, almost all jurisdictions.
Yeah.
Got CARES Act, ARPA.
So how do we pare back down to pre, to 2019 spending levels where we're supposed to be?
Yeah, if we go back one slide, that's, that's part of what we'll discuss today is some direction given to staff to start. I'm not saying 2019 level. I'm just saying.
2020.
You have an overview of what it looks like. But it's not a, a simple equation because as even the discussion about the FTEs, some of this, some of the positions are mandates that are required. And so then the commissioners have to add positions and it brings things up. Some of them are offset by revenue. So that's part of what budget team needs to really dig into operationally is how do we navigate this process through. I think at this point, we wanted to give you the, the information, the data so that you can see some of the trending and be better informed on what the direction looks like for us to go back and do some research and provide you some opportunities and scenarios on how to address things. Any questions so far?
Yeah.
Yep.
So, you know, basically we're talking about a short 10%, just, just roughly, say 10%.
And that, that right, what I will say, Commissioner Edwards, is there's a couple of components of the budget that, that are a little bit of a variable. I'll explain it real quick. Like, what we try to do is we try to balance it out based on what we know our revenue is coming in at. If you anticipate forecasted revenue versus what we're actually, actually bringing in, there could be a difference in that. And then it's expenses out. The departments forecast what they're going to spend, but sometimes they don't always forecast an exact amount. And so they could give back more money than anticipated. That's the reversion that organizationally I've heard a lot about, that people say, you said we had no money at this level. But then when it, when it all shakes out, there's a reversion that comes back and you see it wasn't as bad as we thought. The difference is the board authorizes a department to spend a certain amount, and then they're working to spend that amount. There's a lot of variables as why they may not be able to spend that amount. Some of it is, is salary savings. They can't fill the positions. We're asking them to forecast that number. But when that number is off, that's where you could have more money than you anticipated. I think what's important when we're forecasting out is looking at what we're actually bringing in on the revenue. If revenue is not trending up, it's very risky to then anticipate you're going to get that revenue. It's always better to, to anticipate a conservative number and then have more at the end. That could bring people into criticism because if you're too conservative and the number's greater, it looks like you are gatekeeping the budget on purpose. But when we're anticipating 2%, which I think that's conservative growth, and we lived in the out years, and then we're only bringing in 1.6%. That's what I really want to focus the conversation on is that's, that's what we're, we're realizing. That's not in dispute. That's an actual number. Therefore, that's where the adjustment has to come in.
Okay, so just to follow up on that.
Yeah.
That's kind of the overall issue, you might say. But now the reality issue that we have to deal with is the sheriff's office is a big, big player in the general fund. So if we can't make reductions there because of bond issue or the taxation requirement, that means we've got to take 20% from the rest. So how do we figure all that out?
That's what we would seek to, we can't do that here at this.
No, no, I know we're not going to, but, but so the grand, the larger picture is a bigger problem.
It is. Because what we have to, we have, in my opinion, we have two different considerations. We have to land, that, finish this two-year budget. We have the 25, second half of the 2425 budget that we have to figure out. There, there's a lot of requests that have come in. What was the number? Eight point?
Just over eight.
Eight point two million of requests, new requests that have come in. Some of that, so that's what we, we want to spend some time talking about. Then we need to plan for the future years, the out years, the, you know, 26, 27. Structurally, that's where we have to start looking at some changes there.
I guess my, my concern is that if we're only talking about 10%, well, that's okay. Maybe we can do 10%. But if you start talking 20%, everybody's going to really get nervous and tighten things up because what's going to happen if? And, and I'm just grabbing those numbers out of here, but there, there's something like that, you know? Because it's a, we got a nightmare on our hands and I don't think that many people know about that yet.
Yeah, I mean, it, it equates to, with the forecast that's being shown, it equates to about $12 million. Now, again, the two variables are if revenues come in higher, great. If they come in lower. And also what are, what are departments actually spending on their budgets? So if we appropriate a certain amount and they're going to come in lower than that, then that's money back, back to us. It's hard, and so we tend to treat that as a one-time because you appropriated that amount or hoping they would spend that amount. But...
Dialled it in a little better, that wouldn't be considered one-time. That would be able to program it in over.
You could dial in a little bit better. That's going to take conversation with departments and how we do our process right now. So that's part of what I think we're at a crossroads is, and I have some, you know, some things for you all to consider for us to be bringing that information back and recommendations based on the requests at hand, the 25 requests. How do we land this two-year budget so that we have the cash flow we need to pay our bills and get through the year? And then we start spending, as soon as we finish with that, we look to structurally start to address, how do we bring greater alignment to our budget so that we're not seeing a negative in, in our reserve in the out years? And hopefully bringing those two lines closer together. Because structurally, if we don't fix anything, our spending will continue on an upward trend.
When are we going to be, I mean, we've been kicking the maintenance of effort, public safety tax can down the road for the whole year. And it seems to me we're at the point where we have to resolve that because that's what Commissioner Edwards' point is, is goes to. He's right. If that were the, if the most restrictive interpretation were adopted, I can't possibly imagine that, that it could be the case that by enacting a public safety tax, you, you could never cut the sheriff's budget, no matter what the economic circumstances. I, that would flat, that would, that would completely, I, I can't believe that could be true. But that has to be resolved or else we can't get to the, the other decisions that we have to make.
We, I agree 100% with that. We will make that a priority to bring back ASAP, that discussion with the stakeholders and...
It's more than the stakeholders because the stakeholders could be the taxpayers. So we better have to get a darn good review by legal about what we can or can't do.
Sure. So we will, we started packaging that conversation up. The team has worked on an approach. This was before it came into focus, how the out years are greatly affected by our current situation. And so there's more urgency, Chair, to your comment about moving that, that conversation forward. What we will show if we go forward two slides. So this is the, what, what the forecast would look like if the 25 budget request has submitted. You can just see that it, it pretty much craters.
You mean with the eight million added in?
Yeah. Goes from, yeah. So that's, that's what it looks like. Let me go to the next slide.
I don't know how you say that. I mean, how can you say that nice without crying?
I think they've done their crying.
There's no crying in budget.
So again, budget considerations, we just have it up there. The team can do the analysis on what the impacts are if minimum wage goes up. And we have to do the legal analysis of would we be required to follow that, that minimum wage increase? The MOE discussion is top on our list. The conversations around the sheriff's contract is something for future consideration. Public defense, new caseload standards has to be part of this conversation. And then this is always a, a new term, the errata list, technical corrections that need to occur before the budget adoption. That's just, as it says, technical corrections that we will have to bring forward as a team starts to flush everything out and cross the Ts and dot the Is. That process happens. I think I have a budget assigned. It even happened in the amendment. All right, next slide. Policy level considerations. Recommended act.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can I do a follow-up before? Before you move here.
Yeah.
I, you know, I think yesterday when we talked about this, we talked about, because we've had several of the board members have talked to folks down at Olympia. And sounds like that's probably not moving forward, that minimum wage deal. But I guess, okay, probably, but wouldn't it be a surprise if they did? So I guess we have to be responsible and at least be aware of it. But I, but the thing is, to be aware of it, whatever the percentage of increase is from what it is today to 24.
So that's... 1666 statewide, I think.
Yeah, but what, what we're actually paying out, so from our lowest rate wage, which, okay, let's just say it's $20 an hour is our lowest wage. And so if we went to 24, I don't know what that is for a percentage, but you have to times that same percentage to the whole budget, not just to the next income bracket. So the whole budget would have to go up by that much due to compression.
Yeah.
I mean, so I think it's at least being, it, it would be beneficial to be aware. So when people are talking about that, we can say, well, you know, do you realize that is not just going to have an impact on those 42 people that are at that level? It's going to have that same percentage of increase to all parties concerned, all the way to 1,200 employees in our case. And Olympia, I'm hoping they're looking at it somewhat similarly so that we can have an argument. Because there are people that think that's a good idea. so that we can have an argument, because there are people that think that's a good idea. And I just think that we've got to make darn sure it doesn't happen, because if it happened, that would be a double killer.
Yeah, my commitment is for our team to do a high-level analysis, just so that we have a sense of what it would mean to us. But knowing that it's not on the fast track like we thought, maybe a week or so ago, we can just do the high-level analysis, park it, and if we see that it's getting traction, then we can dig more into it and get more details.
I mean, there's no, yeah, I mean, just because, just because there's compression at the very bottom of the scale doesn't mean it has to be fixed. I mean, if somebody, there's no, there's not in the contract that says, I have to make 25% more than minimum wage. If that were the contract, then you'd be right. If that was in everybody's contract, you know, that they have to make a certain percentage over minimum wage. But if the lowest person in Thurston County is $20 in your theory, and the next person is 25, and 20 goes to 22, okay, so.
Well, the only thing is.
Doesn't mean everybody else goes up, it means that people at the very bottom get lifted up.
But then the reality is, we don't have any retention or recruitment. That's what the downsides of it all is, so. So I mean, it's just worth, and I think we ought to have something similar for Olympia.
All right, so here's our recommended course of action. To direct staff to present a fiscal year 25 budget with appropriate cash reserves to sustain operations through 25. The next item would be for the road fund, general fund transfer of 2 million to be reversed. And then to fund the FJC from bond proceeds, not the general fund. Future discussions are to review operational necessities for fiscal year 25. We're going to start next week, I believe the elected department heads will come in Monday and start talking to you about their budget requests.
Say operational necessity, can you like?
Yeah, what we mean is, some requests come through and they're.
Needs versus wants.
Yeah, they're required, so there's some mandate or requirement that happens almost every single year. So what we would want to do is have the budget team kind of pull those out and give you an overview. I mean, we find sharing that with our leadership team as well for their review so that by the time you're getting information, you can say, we believe these are operational necessities. And then these are discretionary, are a policy discussion. But with the first point, to direct staff, you know, time is limited, there's a lot going on. And so we really have, in my opinion, land a 25-year budget. And so what we would do is bring you a couple of options and say, hey, this is how we do it with the cash reserves, where we need them to be to pay our bills. And have some recommendations on, we think you should support this, and these are the things that we think you should not support.
Okay, then, what the chair brought up though, about the reality of, kind of following up on what I said, is we do need to have an answer from legal about how far do we follow this no supplanting business? I mean, where's the breaking point? What happens there? Because otherwise, we're just having staff do a bunch of work. And maybe they have to do it all over again, and to an extent, I don't know how that can work.
And to be clear, you know, what we've heard from our legal team is, you know, they're going to provide some guidance, but they're not the ones that are going to say, you have to do it this way. Their, one of their comments initially was, well, you go to the intent of the voters. But based on different folks' perspective, they'd have different understandings of what the intent was when we went out to the voters. So it's going to be our desire, based on some of the input we received from the board last time, for you to know what are the boundaries of your decision-making, and you guys can discuss it.
As representatives of those voters, we will make a determination on what that intent was or how I interpret that. And you say budget containment options, is that where we would be talking about things like position control? Vacant positions for the last two years need to be evaluated and?
Yeah, we would, we would come back probably next week and have a conversation about that. Indeed, tell the staff have, during, I think, the recession, during the pandemic, there's a lot of things that this organization has looked at. Some of you commissioners may remember some of that from the pandemic. So we bring some of those things through and talk them through. What I would want us to do, and they need a little bit of time to process that, is for us to quantify what the savings would be in the different measures. There's no sense of throwing four pages of budget containment options that don't really net out a lot of. I think that the reality is, is the uncertainty of the economy and the fact that it didn't bounce back as fast as, we're not realizing that bounced back as fast. That's, for folks who are operationally minded and they're seeing this, that's tough. It's not as if you haven't already had a budget conversation in the previous budget cycle. And those are painful and hard conversations to have. So we're trying to balance the compressed timeframe with giving this team enough time to get in and do good work, for us to have time with the auditors team. Because based on the budgeting aspect and the auditing aspect and the accounting aspect, we want to make sure that we're showing up differences in a transparent manner. And that's going to be important as we move forward. But there is a lot to do still.
I guess, I'm going to sound like I'm beating a dead horse here, I guess, but I think the prosecuting attorney told us early on that he didn't want to give an opinion on that.
Fireworks House was directly, it was, when we had that conversation, I was in DC and I was of the mindset that if it was a legal question, then we should get the NAG opinion on it and stall any kind of spending from that. Fund until we got that. And Prosecutor Tunheim said, well, it's not really a legal question, it's more of a political question of what you promised to the voters. He's like, you know, so that's kind of how he described it, that it wasn't really legal. It was more political.
Somehow, we need to figure out an answer to the question because it's going to be the five board, the five commissioners here.
Yeah, we will bring it forward.
Sheriff.
I just don't want, I mean, I know it's ultimately our decision, but I don't want to keep fighting about it. I mean, and I seem to remember the auditor's office feeling that it wasn't, not, at least early on. Maybe, maybe there's been evolution in that thinking, but early on, there was a suggestion that, you know, it was not a political decision, that it was a legal, you know, decision. And that just has to be, you know, for one way or another, it has to be resolved, like either the board just.
It sounded, I thought that was resolved.
Oh, I don't think it was resolved.
Easily resolved. It was resolved and the opinion was given to us. It was just, we hadn't, we hadn't, we hadn't gotten like the moment of resolve where we said, this is our interpretation.
I don't remember ever, ever coming to that decision.
Yeah, I don't either, and I'm not being an advocate, one way or the other.
Yeah, I'm not.
I'm just saying.
We got to know, I'm with you, like I'm not.
We need an answer before we move forward.
I mean, the most extreme position, I guess, I would, I'm an advocate that we're not in that box. But there was a range of possibilities of which I didn't really understand the answer exactly.
Well, then I go back to the, my point that I made back in February when we were discussing this. If we're going to be going for a legal opinion, then we shouldn't be spending anything from that fund. Because I don't want to have to be returning money back, like I don't, so if we're going to go a legal way and a legal route, and I'm okay with going that, I am, I do not want to be spending money out of those funds because I don't want to be returning money back after we get an opinion.
I think it's too late.
Well, then, might as well be returning money back, I just.
I don't think that we'd have to return money back, there's already appropriations.
Yes.
This conversation does have to take place. What we were trying to do is take different perspectives and try to find a sweet spot where folks could understand and live with it. But situations are a little bit different, and I understand with the board, you don't want to know your parameters. And that's what we'll do. We will run it through the legal team. I believe, based on what has been said here, is the sense that I have that it's not a straight legal question, like a black and white. There's going to be a level of nuance to that, and that's where it's going to, it's going to come down to, here's the parameters. The other, some of the other folks that are part of the conversation, elected department heads and other electeds in the county, they will come and share their viewpoint, and then the board can consider and make a decision.
Here's my issue, Leonard, that the discussions that we had, that I remember, were somewhat incomplete.
Got it.
At least in my brain, because we were not looking at this shortfall. We were looking at a situation where, okay, we're going to have labor contracts, we're going to be spending more out of the typical general funds sheriff up because the labor contracts are going to demand that. We've got public safety tax money, we're going to be spending more there. It was, it was all in an expansionist thing, and there were complexities there. But we weren't even thinking about the idea of, well, what happened if there's a huge budget shortfall and we have to cut the general fund budget? That, we never, we never teased out that, the unfolding of that scenario as it applied to the maintenance of effort conversation and the dollar amount that Robin was trying to kind of use as a, as a, you know, a really efficient way to sort of, to. That was one way to deal with the maintenance of effort non-supplant. So I just feel like, you know, even if Carolina's right that we kind of got to a point, like I think there's a new dimension to the conversation. And as I think through the scenarios that we're going, facing now, I get myself confused again about.
I really understand. This is a very technical conversation, and there's a lot of very valid viewpoints. And so we will tee this up to happen as soon as we can.
Sooner than later.
Hopefully next week, we can be here with, and inform the stakeholders. We part that conversation, we can talk it through.
But to me, his concern, if we're going to go that route, I think we're better asking for an opinion from the Attorney General earlier than later. You know, just, I mean, that kind of depends on what Tunheim says, so.
Yeah, we'll run your traps, we won't be able to by next week.
No, we're not going to get an instant answer on this at all, but I think we really need to seriously consider it, because I think it's got, it's the question that really jams us up.
We'll get that one.
It's bad enough we're stuck in this situation, but.
Yeah, I'm not interested in doing anything that's, you know.
Yeah, I hear you.
It's not in line with what we're supposed to be doing.
Got you, so. Okay. Next slide is an overview of general fund projection methodology. And I won't go through the details, I think it is just helpful to kind of lay this out there so that maybe the new commissioners understand the work that the budget team undertakes when they do this. It does lead to the conversation about the next slide, if you can go there. And our budget staff from the commissioner's office have put together revenues expenditures, and then they come to a fund balance. The auditor's team has a document where they put together revenues expenditures, and they come to a fund balance. As I said in the beginning, this is a conversation we're going to be having with our partners in this, the auditor's team, kind of talk through that. But there are reasons for the difference based on how the budget team is identifying where revenues are and below, that they are below the projected amount. Expenditures, we're not too far off, although we want to dial that in because a million dollars is still a lot of money. But at the end of the day, $7.8 million doesn't change the fact that we are, we're still in a budget situation with our fund balance. And so just know that we'll be meeting with the auditor's team. And this is our, you know, our commitment to walking things through and working with everyone that needs to be worked with. But, yeah, it doesn't significantly, in the out years, change the outlook.
That's what I was going to say, if you plugged in the auditor's number, the fund balance, it really doesn't change the, I wouldn't think it would change the model.
I mean, it's a little bit higher, but it's not like it's, oh, it puts us out of place where there's no worries anymore.
Right.
But this isn't the only area where there are some differences. And that's normal, when they're putting data together and we're, our teams have to meet and hash it out. And, you know, we look forward to in future years, without the DC Connect backdrop, having more time for our teams to work collaboratively together and share information. I appreciate, I believe it was Darren that was working on some of the projections, and I know he has a lot on his plate, so doing great work, and he got it over to us. And I appreciate our teams sending information, so we're exercising those muscles right now. But what our desire is, is we want to get you the best and most accurate information. And I believe we can do that in a collaborative process. If we go back a couple of slides to policy recommendation, policy, yeah, here we go. What I would add to this list here is the MOE discussion base up. We'll bring that together next week and have that conversation. Thank you.
Even coming back and having that discussion, I still think, I mean, it's such a, if, if this was to go, you know, so we're only 10% short, that's one thing. But if we're 10% short and we can't make any cuts over here in these certain areas, that might be the prosecutor, could be the sheriff, jail, I don't know all what it's going to boil down to. But if we got to do 20% everywhere else to make up that 10% total, that is, that's an earthquake. That's about as bad as it can possibly get.
Yeah.
So I know I sound like a broken record, but I just think it's really important before, that we get that as quick as we can.
And I hear what you're saying, you know, if you have an area that's a large general fund used department that you can't cut from, but we don't know that yet. I think we're going to have the MOE discussion next week, we'll bring that forward. And we'll bring the forward the parameters, you know, and we can even talk about some of the things that staff had in mind. But even what we had in mind a few weeks ago is very different. The Thursday, things coming into focus really changed the level of urgency and the awareness of where we're at right now. So that's where, from my perspective, knowing that time and staff resources are limited, we want to get back to you next week with a, here's our recommendation to get us through 25. And then we need to, you know, move the road fund back, fund FJC that way. Part of that discussion is operational necessities in 25, but we need to make sure we have that cash flow to get us through. Then we very quickly continue to have the conversations about what do we need to do to contain the budget? MOE is part of that conversation, we will have it next week. I think, I'd just be prepared for a lot of different perspectives and opinions on that. And I think you are, because, you know, it would have been great in hindsight to have written the language bulletproof before the item got passed. But we do appreciate the effort everyone put into getting that passed. I mean, and would really encourage that that doesn't become a point of division among us because it is something that the county work together, and it is additional revenue, so it's an opportunity. Opportunity we didn't have prior to the voters approving it, so we can have those discussions. But we have an opportunity to land 25 and do it effectively, and then to look at the structure of 26, 27, and beyond, and what that really means. There's going to be a lot of conversation, conversations with our leaders, both appointed and elected, about how do we get through that? Those are going to be painful conversations. It's always easier when you have money to give out than it is when you're asking people to cut. And I understand that, you know, from a psyche standpoint, this organization had to do cuts last time. Commissioners that were here, you went through it, the electeds that were here went through it, the appointments went through it. I get a lot of narrative about those times of being the new county manager, but it's a road that we're going to have to walk to restructure things.
Nobody said this was going to be fun.
Come to me here, dude.
You're wrong.
Problem solving. Probably something.
Is that the topic for today?
Yeah, this is the topic for today.
So with the recommended actions, are you requesting direction today?
Yes. Adding to that bullet point, bring forward the MOE discussion next week.
So with the road fund, general fund transfer of $2 million, that's basically reversing our budget amendment decision?
Yes, everything from Amendment One or whatever.
Well, not everything, no. What we're asking just for is a $2 million from the road fund.
How is the road fund? I mean, do they have capacity?
We haven't, to be fair, we have not sat with Jennifer and had time to sit and talk about what the impacts are.
I.
Robin's saying we don't, we don't necessarily need a decision. Maybe the direction is for us to go and talk to Jennifer.
I would, I would, for me, right, I just, I know that they have budgeted a certain amount of services based on the fact that we made this decision. And so I just want to know specifically to that fund, what is going to be the impact? Can it carry it? And.
We can come back with a breakout of what that looks like.
And I'm guessing, sorry, can I ask one more question? So based on this model, the 6.5 transfer that we're doing from the road fund, is that just for, that's for 2025 as well, right? And then it, does it go back down to four? Or does it continue on to 6.5 in the model?
We would need to check that. Let us double check that. It was supposed to be a time limited thing.
And again, that, we're not trying to pick on the road fund or pick on Public Works. All we're saying is to the comment that if we go back to the, the forecast, it says Amendment One. If the information was, yeah, there we go. If you would have seen that document, and I want to reiterate that the team has like quadruple checked that and even built it from the ground up again, just making sure that they weren't missing something. But if you had just seen that, our Amendment One discussion would have been very, very different. So, you know, I'll take responsibility that commissioners are only as, going to be able to make good decisions if they get good information. And with all, everything we've talked about coming together, TC Connect, et cetera, we just had a bit of a blackout period with getting good information. I think we're, we're not what we want to be, but the team is working and squeezing that lemon to get you this cup of lemonade right now.
I am so.
Albeit very tart.
So I.
Lemon extract.
Where I'm at, I'm okay with the recommended actions, right? I just would like that conversation with Public Works because I know they were able to wiggle it. They wiggled in a lot, a little bit more on their services. Or I'm not sure if they did or not, just based on the fact that this was coming back. And so if it's, if it's not, right, and they didn't put it into their calculations, like I think we can proceed, but.
Yeah, and I'm sure there's impacts. And I know the board's commitment to Public Works was not only to get this back to the, or the $2 million, but then you also gave them ARPA funding. And so we know that that was the board's commitment. And no one, no one likes that we're in this place. But we are happy to sit with Public Works and to report on what the impacts are going to be because I'm sure there will be impacts.
What are the two funds, I guess I'm asking Robin, that out of the road fund we have used in the past? There's a crab amount, you know, for law enforcement. And then there's a levy shift. What are those two, what are those things total out to in possibilities?
Impossibilities?
Well, for the one, it's, it's meant to cover with the sheriff's activities.
The road diversion can only be spent on sheriff, road deputies who are performing road safety, so DUI stops and those types of activities.
But I can't remember if he's maxed out on.
He's not.
He's not. So there's some, there's a buffer there, and I'm just wondering what that is.
So we could shift even more, but we really need to look at the road.
I'm not saying it's a good idea. Yes, I mean, I'm just asking, we've done it in the past for different things. And there's the levy and the crab.
Diversion.
And the diversion. So those two things, right? I mean, it's just, it's worth knowing that they're there, whether you want to do anything with them or not.
So you asked about that last budget cycle, and Robin came back to, like, there's almost no limit on, I mean, on the shift.
It's because of the, because of our current levy rates.
Yes, it's had something to do with rates.
There's, there's tons of room.
But then we just don't have any roads to drive on.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't. But it's, but it is worth knowing, I guess. We should never go into something blindsided that we don't know about this or that. I mean, we've got that rainy day fund, maybe that's something, you know. It's only one-time money, though.
So that's where, and in the board's consideration, that's where I want to focus staff on. Come back with a budget for 25 that has appropriate cash reserves. Do what we need to do and come up with options. So we will come up with a new approach of if we can do this. I think what I would want, the more folks are tuning in, and I appreciate their time and investment in watching this. This is a tough place to be, bless you, Rob. A tough place to be. I wish we had a month to, you know, to stop and look at every single thing, have conversations with every department head. Things are just moving very, very fast right now. And it's, it's not good news. You know, it's easier when you pick up the phone or send an email saying, hey, how can you spend a million dollars? Well, great, that could take like five minutes to discuss in a department. But when you're asking folks to look at things and to reduce, that's a more, you know, emotionally charged conversation because it impacts the way they do business. And I know our team of elected and appointed department heads, they take a lot of pride in the service, as do the commissioners. We take pride in Thurston County, the service we provide. But here we find ourselves, and there's some adjustments that need to take place.
I mentioned it before, but since people might just be tuning in. I mean, last year, we had a modest exercise in this thing. And I was talking to Olympia city manager, and they had about a double. And I was thinking at the time, gosh, how did we, how did we escape what they were facing? And I think Lacy was more in line with Olympia, but I'm not sure about that. They might have been in line with us. But I remember in particular thinking, how did we escape such a, such a difficult? And now this year, we're in a difficult position, and they have an almost exactly equal proportionate situation. So they've hit it twice. Again, I don't, I just think it's, we didn't quite know about it because of some of the information challenges. We didn't, but in terms of where we are and why we got here, it's, it's not.
Yeah, we're not unusual.
It's not, yeah, it's not something unusual of some, you know, it's hitting our local jurisdictions.
State just posted about $40 million, $39 something.
Which is nothing for them, but, but still underperforming. Yeah.
So adding the MOE part to the actions, is the board comfortable with directing staff on those points?
Yeah. I think everybody's with you on that, aren't we?
So we will inform folks that are, been a part of our internal stakeholder group about the MOE discussion, that we're going to be bringing that forward quickly. And I think the way we'll structure it is to allow folks to come and talk about their perspective on it. We'll probably start with a, hey, here's, talk to our legal team. This is kind of the guidance, here's your parameters, board. And so you know your options, and then you can hear perspectives and then have a discussion to come to some type of direction to staff so we can get going on it. Appreciate your leadership and direction on that as well.
You know, I, Mary's been in attendance, I don't know if you knew that, with our meeting, I don't know. I can't see if it's. No, 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 I just wanted to let you know that she was.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Well, we're all working together and hearing the same thing.
Well, you wouldn't hear the same thing from me, so we can talk about that at a different time.
She said we wouldn't be hearing the same thing.
Yep. But somebody needs to be busy. Okay.
So we have.
Okay, any commissioner items? Not after that. Okay, we're joined.